Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 2018 meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees. Ms. Beriantos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller. Victor Garza.
Yep.
James Mulkey.
Here.
John Massengo.
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Mr. President, I'm very pleased to introduce our Principal of ECDC, Mr. Damon Trainer, who brings with him some of our very exceptional students, some of our youngest learners from ECDC.
I'm with you, Damon. There's a lot of work left to do today, so it should be this morning.
We're not going to hopefully be here in the morning, so we'll do our part to speed along. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to, Mr. Bryant, tell you good evening, School Board, Mr. Toscano, welcome guests. I do have a few of our friends here today from ECDC. We did have a couple that came down with the flu today that were scheduled to be here, so they got to go to the doctor, from school to the doctor, and from the doctor to home, so they're not joining us this evening. But we have Asher over here, and I was once told never bring anybody that's going to outdress you. So, Asher. Then we have Octavio, and we have Kinsley. So these three are going to help us in the pledge and prayer this evening. So if we could please have everybody stand. Let's go. Everybody come over here, so they can hear you. Over here. Turn around. You all ready? One, two, three. All right. My pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right.
And justice for all.
Honor.
And justice.
Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right. Now we're going to say the prayer. Real quick, let's say the prayer. All right. Dear Lord, we ask you that you...
Bless our school.
Bless our...
School board.
Administration.
Administration.
Bless our faculty. Bless our faculty. Bless our schools.
Bless our faculty. Faculty.
Amen.
Amen. Amen.
I hope y'all could tell that that was rehearsed. The whole thing was rehearsed. So, all right, thank you. Y'all may be seated. At this time, though, I would, we're going to deviate just slightly here. I'm going to ask if I could have all the Principals from the elementary, please, stand up front. If we have a Principal or representative from the elementaries, please come up front. We have a gift for you guys. One, two, three. Ms. Barnes is coming. All right. All right. Behind you guys, there's a pot. I'm going to ask that each of y'all, they're not real heavy, but I'm going to ask that y'all grab a pot, y'all go stand with them. Y'all go stand in between them, okay? Okay. We have a little story, and it's, "The Big Oak Tree Started as a Little Acorn." And inside these pots, there's an acorn planted from the recent crop of acorns at ECDC, and I'm asking that y'all take them back, and this tree will grow, and in 2032, y'all should have a nice 12. When these guys graduate, they're able to come back, and they hopefully will see a little oak tree coming up, so y'all are going to have some nurturing to do to get this tree to grow. I'll give y'all some hints after the meeting, because I did read about it. But, little story about oak trees. Every tree has roots. Our roots keep us grounded to a solid foundation. We establish a strong foundation of learning with our pre-K program that will have lasting effects on our students' experience of being a lifelong learner. Every tree has a trunk. The trunk of a tree is big and strong, and will provide strength in stormy times, continue to help our students grow like the trunk of a tree to be strong leaders and learners. The branches of a tree reach out and provide shape to our trees. Let your chief teachers branch out and shape a nurturing environment full of language, compassion, and meaningful experiences. The leaves of a tree are like children we serve. Every leaf is unique, and no two are alike. Acorns, just as an acorn is a seed of life for a tree, so is education that we provide on a daily basis. The first step to a wonderful tree is the acorn. Pre-K is the first step for our students. And lastly, seasons. We all go through seasons. Seasons come and seasons go, but the best part of a season is the memories it leaves behind. I pray that all your seasons are filled with beautiful memories. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to have my three friends, Ms. Bockley, who came to help me tonight, and myself, are going to help bring y'all some little goodie bags, and for the lucky ones, we have some artwork for you guys, too, so take home. If you haven't had any artwork on your refrigerator, and sometime, I think it will make a very nice Thanksgiving to have some little artwork on your refrigerators for Thanksgiving. So we'll do that and pass that out, and we'll be on our way. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Look at that little guy there, man.
What you got there? Thank you. You look good. Wow. That's great. Look at there.
Look at there, man.
Look at there. Hey, nice.
You're so cute. Aren't you pretty?
Yeah.
Ooh, good firm handshake. I'll kiss you in the eye. Like it.
Nice, very nice.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
Yeah.
It's turkey.
Turkey.
Yeah.
Before we do go, I do want to recognize the parents. If parents, family members of Asher, Octavio, and Kinsley could please stand up or wave, that'd be awesome, real quick. Thank you, guys. Thank y'all for bringing them out tonight.
Well, Mr. Trainer, thank you very much for bringing those young ones out here. I had the opportunity to meet them before the meeting, and I can tell you that each one of them looked me in the eye and shook my hand, and it was amazing. And there's the East Central Class of 2032. You stop and think about that for a minute. That's the work.
There's going to be a tree planted.
Yeah?
And we're going to come and look at that tree.
That's the work that gets done every day in the school district by some magnificent people, is shaping minds for the Class of 2032. And we really thank y'all for being here this evening, and we hope that you have a great evening. We're going to do one more agenda item. We have an award to pass out, some recognitions, and then we'll take a short recess so that y'all, those of y'all who need to go home and do homework, or great homework, can go home. All right. So, awards and recognitions, please, Mr. Toscano.
Sir, Mr. President, I'd like to call our lead nurse in the district, Ms. Jaylen Hart, to come forward. She has an expression of gratitude through the American Heart Association to a partner of the districts who, with his generosity, afforded the district a great opportunity through the American Heart Association. So, Ms. Hart?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Gary Joris, Chief Executive Officer of Joris General Contractors. During his 30-year career in commercial construction, Mr. Joris has adhered to and deepened the same high-quality business ethics on which his father built the firm. He is active in each project, and his strong leadership and management skills have been key factors in the firm's continued success. Mr. Joris is actively involved in many business and community organizations. For the past four years, he has served on the Board of Directors of the American Heart Association San Antonio Division. He has generously contributed both leadership and financial support to ensure that the American Heart Association continues to expand its reach throughout San Antonio and the surrounding communities. Mr. Joris joins us this evening with a special donation. In the spirit of reaching out to the community to carry the message of the American Heart Association, he is graciously donating a hands-free CPR training kit. We're really excited. This will be used at our middle and high school levels and staff so that we can get everyone out there to hopefully save some lives, hopefully not have to use that, but we're really excited to have you here. Welcome, Mr. Joris.
Well, Mr. Toscano, and President Bryant, members of the School Board, as you said, I'm on the American Heart Association Board, and when Caitlin and the bosses over there say that I've helped raise enough money, they let me graciously give out a CPR kit. So we chose East Central as one of our partners right now in your construction program, and we appreciate that partnership and hope that this goes to a good cause of training some young men and women to hopefully help save a life, or hopefully, they don't have to, but just in case, they will be prepared. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joris. We appreciate your partnership with the district. All right. As promised, we're going to take a 10-minute recess so that those of y'all who need to leave can go, and then we'll resume at five minutes to seven. I guess everybody's ready to go. It's a little before the time I promised, but if we get started early, we'll get out early. All right. Our next agenda item is public comments. We've had 15 people sign up to speak to the Board this evening. The Board allocates 30 minutes before each meeting for public comments. That would mean that if my math is correct, each speaker will get two minutes. The Board may not respond to you. Please do not expect a response from the Board. Everyone who signed up this evening has chosen to speak on the Guardian program, except for one individual who did not specify what they were speaking on. We will be dealing with this topic later in the Board meeting, so there will not be any discussion between the Board and the speaker. Our first speaker this evening is Laura Ayton. Ms. Ayton, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Toscano, and esteemed members of the Board. I've gone from six minutes, cut to three minutes, and now two, so I have something to present to you that's the longer expression, if you don't mind. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight on the Guardian program. I think it's important, as the Texas Association of School Boards recommends, to hear from all stakeholders, and I'm proud to be a stakeholder in this community. As a graduate, a teacher, a parent, and a longtime resident, though recently retired from the classroom, I will never retire from caring about this community. My goal is the same as I believe everyone's tonight, focusing on a safe education. My concern lies with the manner of reaching that goal, primarily the Guardian Plan, which is what I understand is under consideration. This plan allows designated staff to carry a concealed handgun on school premises. Districts are allowed to choose their own training requirements, and they must fund this option themselves. According to TASB, this program is primarily used for districts who have no district police department, are concerned about excessive response time in the case of a shooting or other crisis, are in the proximity of high-crime areas, are near major railroads, and/or who have a history of violent incidents. Currently, I do not believe this describes our district. My concern is twofold. Arming staff members who are not trained law enforcement officers actually increases the risk of accidents, aggressions, and violence on campus rather than serving as a deterrent. Furthermore, it changes the role of staff member from educator to enforcer. I lived around guns all my life. My family is composed of hunters and law enforcement officers. I've been taught to respect guns and their life-ending capacity. I'm sure I'm not the only one here tonight who was taught not to aim a gun unless I was willing to shoot, and not to shoot a gun unless I was willing to kill. The brave men and women who risk their lives as soldiers and law enforcement officers are provided intense training so they can handle the necessary mindset that routinizes this process. I don't believe that with just a fraction of the training, any civilian educator could do the job of highly educated and trained police, SWAT, or military. Of course, we are lucky to have those whose first career was one of those highly trained individuals, but the scope of the Guardian program goes well beyond that. I've prepared some thoughts for you about the role of civilian educators carrying a weapon on a school setting. I've gathered that from much reading, research, and discussion with law enforcement officers I'd like to offer you tonight. There were armed guards at Columbine, there were hundreds of armed officers at Fort Hood, and yet sadly, their presence did not...
Ms. Ayton, I'm going to have to cut you short. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Priscilla Garcia.
My name is Priscilla Garcia. I'm a parent, a teacher, and an active community member of ECISD. I've lived in Lakeside since the second grade, and I've been an educator here in this district for over 13 years. My children attend school at Oak Crest Elementary and Salado Intermediate. I'd say that I'm a stakeholder in this district 10 times over. I'm here to express my concerns with the implementation of the Guardian Plan that you are voting on later this evening. Let me begin by saying that I am completely for the protection and safety of every human being that steps on the campus. I'm not for voting on one possible solution tonight for a problem that does not exist in ECISD. I say that because we have a very capable and trusted police department. Thank you, Chief. Their wait time is under three minutes. The school districts that have implemented this plan, their wait time is over 20 minutes for responses. I believe that community input should have been collected for a decision like this. I am calling for a detailed outline of this plan specifying regulation and implementation to be shared with this community, and to, before a vote is even done, is even committed. You had a committee, you had an agenda, but you didn't have whole community input. Why are we taking the cheap way out? Why aren't we hiring more police officers? Why aren't we looking into bulletproof safe rooms as a start? How about purchasing night lock lockdown systems for every classroom door? Why aren't we ensuring that the EC CARES program is implemented with fidelity at all East Central schools, taking away the autonomy from the schools to ensure that every student is receiving the same quality mental health care to prevent such a tragedy as this? Because statistically showing that 95% of shooters are 17-year-old white males. Why is the Guardian Plan the only option you are considering tonight? Furthermore, you would arm teachers. You say you won't. I've heard it from you, but you would have to. We're the only ones closest to students. We must first begin looking at data. You charge us as educators to look at the data. I charge you to look at the data. I am asking for time. I'm asking for research, and I'm asking for community input tonight. Those are the three things that I am begging you for.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I'm going to have to call your time. Fatima Mendez?
Board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Fatima Mendez, and I am a Legislative Staff Attorney with MALDA, a civil rights organization. But today, I'm here in my individual capacity as a longtime resident of the East Central School District, as well as a graduate of the Class of 2004, and a Lakeside resident. I am also here as a Thea of a nephew who attends an elementary school within the school district, and a niece who will soon be attending this school district. I am here to discuss the Guardian Plan. I believe that it is shameful that this was put on the agenda and not provided to the community in some sort of strategic, widespread way so that the community could interact with you and could provide input on a large-scale basis. You, as elected officials, are appointed and given the responsibility to give information to the community, but also to give the Board information about your community, the positions that they have, and the concerns that they have. To do that, I do believe that you need to have accurate polling of the community, and how the community, which includes stakeholders of parents, teachers, students, other personnel that work within this district. I do not think that this was done through the Safety Committee that was limited in scope, and I also do believe that there was at least one Board member who posted a Facebook status. I do not think that that is sufficient. I think it lacks professionalism, and I think it is wholly inaccurate to determine the community's input. This conversation should be informed. We should, first of all, establish if there is a necessity for this plan to be implemented. I think that there has been data presented that says that it does not. I also have two handouts that I will be providing to you that has data and studies that I think will inform you of the opposite. I think that we should also recognize that the school districts in the state of Texas that have implemented a program such as the Marshall Program or the Guardian Plan have been less than 200 in a state that has over 1,000 school districts. Those school districts are primarily rural. They do not have the demographics of the East Central School District that I think we are proud to say is diverse, that we have a demographic that is rural as well as very urban, and I think that you should also consider the demographics of this district and how it varies from the districts that have implemented these programs across the state. I think that this conversation needs to continue. I strongly urge you to delay a vote in passing the Guardian Plan or any sort of school safety plan today, and to open this to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Your time is over. Our next speaker is Keith Kyleman.
My name is Keith Kyleman, longtime resident of East Central School District. I have two children in the district. I graduated in 98. Been involved in this community for quite some time. I have a few talking points. My main point on this Guardian issue is there are 1,227 independent school districts in Texas, 217 deploy a Guardian or Marshall program. I couldn't find one instance where it was implemented in a district that has a viable police department like we do. We have a very capable, viable, well-equipped police force at this school, at this district, and I just feel that this is a moot point, and we have no need for this in our district. The second one is, the Guardian Plan is, from what I'm understanding, is the one that's being introduced. That is a, "We need to fund that ourselves" plan. The state doesn't allocate any funds for that, so we would have to find the funds for that. Not only that, we would have to find funds to ensure or bond the teachers and the staff that you choose to arm, because a child's life is worth millions of dollars, and you'd have to have millions worth of bonding or insurance to cover a mishap or a worst-case scenario in case a gun goes off, or whatever, God forbid, you know, situation happens. That's just another cost on top of a cost that I don't think we need. Another thing, our teachers don't get paid enough to be teachers. I mean, they barely make enough money to do what y'all ask of them to do on a daily basis, and to add this, you know, I would say burden onto them on top of the ever-sumounting, you know, ideas and plans and situations that y'all put on them on a daily basis, it's just, it's asinine, in my opinion. I mean, my son has been in school...
Thank you, Mr. Kyleman. We appreciate your comments. Gustavo Mendez?
Thank you, Board, for having us today so that we can discuss this matter. I'm an East Central product, okay? I'm a father, I'm a husband. My child goes to St. Clair Elementary, and I'm also a teacher. Now, I am a teacher at Southwest ISD, so please don't take away points, and I'm also a proud LTC license to carry holder, okay? I carry every day. I carry to protect my family. I carry to protect my loved ones, which is something that I hope I never have to do. But as a teacher, I, it's something that I totally disagree with adding something that we're trying to keep out of the schools. You're asking teachers to not only be a mentor, a counselor, a friend, a father in many instances, but to also become a police officer. And even though I do carry, it's something I greatly oppose, to put more guns in schools. You will have more accidents. There will be more people dying by having this implemented. It's just a fact. People who are not trained adequately will make those accidents. If there is an active shooter, and I'm the person that carries, do I leave my kinder class by themselves to go find the shooter? Or do I let those outside my room die? It's not a decision that we should be making. When I carry, it is one of the biggest responsibilities that I carry with, that I have with me, because I know that if I have to use it, someone is going to die. You're telling me that, as a teacher, I might have to kill a student I have built a relationship with because of mental issues, instead of implementing positive reinforcement programs? I've taken many active shooter scenario classes, which I can refer to you through our district, and even the trainer says this is a very irresponsible plan. I asked you to delay the vote, to give it to the community to decide, because you guys are very intelligent people, and I think you would want the, you would want us to add our input to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Amanda Rivas?
The government is the strongest when every person feels themselves apart, said Thomas Jefferson. A representative that does not seek the input of key stakeholders is not performing their duty. We trust you to educate our children and protect them. Inherent is that trust, is your ability to keep us informed, seek our input, and hear our voices. I respectfully request the School Board conduct meaningful research, outreach to East Central parents, staff, students, and community members to engage them in a discussion about the implementation of the Guardian Program. That could be comprehensive parent-staff-student surveys, a public hearing, and/or information sessions that are truly engaged and informed. What I have seen thus far is not 10% of what I expect from my representative. I'm Amanda Rivas, a community member... It's just a fact. People who are not trained adequately will make those accidents. If there is an active shooter, and I'm one of the person, I'm the person that carries, do I leave my kinder class by themselves to go find the shooter? Or do I let those outside my room die? It's not a decision that we should be making. When I carry, it is one of the biggest responsibilities that I carry with, that I have with me, because I know that if I have to use it, someone is going to die. You're telling me that, as a teacher, I might have to kill a student I have built a relationship with because of mental issues instead of implementing positive reinforcement programs? I've taken many active shooter scenario classes, which I can refer to you through our district, and even the trainer says this is a very irresponsible plan. I asked you to delay the vote, to give it to the community to decide, because you guys are very intelligent people, and I think you would want the, you would want us to add our input to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
"The government is the strongest when every person feels themselves apart," said Thomas Jefferson. A representative that does not seek the input of key stakeholders is not performing their duty. We trust you to educate our children and protect them. Inherent is that trust, is your ability to keep us informed, seek our input, and hear our voices. I respectfully request the school board conduct meaningful research, outreach to East Central parents, staff, students, and community members to engage them in a discussion about the implementation of the Guardian Program. That could be comprehensive parent-staff-student surveys, a public hearing, and/or information sessions that are truly engaged and informed. What I have seen thus far is not ten percent of what I expect from my representative. I'm Amanda Rivas, a community member, a future parent for ECISD of a two-and-a-half-year-old and one in Yarol on the way, and a spouse of a ECISD teacher. I was asked to participate in the Safety Committee meeting where feedback was sought about the program, and I was surprised to hear about it for the first time at that meeting. I consider myself a pretty well-informed individual and citizen, but upon my research, I found that there was no mention in the agenda for school boards about this meeting, about this program, until Friday at four o'clock, when this agenda was released. There was an executive session in April, but if you go back two years, that language was vague for the April one, and there was no opportunity for public comment in that special.
Ms. Rivas, I'm gonna correct you for a minute. You make it sound like this meeting was held illegally, that the board was, the meeting was not posted correctly. This meeting was posted correctly with the agenda items on.
That's correct.
Please proceed. I'm not taking away from your time.
Friday at four o'clock.
Yes, ma'am. As required by law, seventy-two hours before the meeting.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
And that is the first time in the last two years that I checked the agenda that the programs were listed by name for public output. The current safety status of ECISD was reviewed and praised during that committee meeting, and I am encouraged what I heard the ECPD has been doing. And I praise Chief Trinowski, what he's done to prepare for these possible threats. In fact, it was stressed that the response time, which was already listed, was less than three minutes and usually around one minute. All these efforts deserve high praise. But what I'm concerned about, and my first thoughts were, what have I not been doing to pay attention? Why did I not know about this as an informed parent? Well, the agendas weren't posting the actual names because it wasn't really discussed in school board meetings. With that listed, Tascano's Spring Message in the School Board Times listed the names of the programs, Marshall and Guardian Program, along with four other possibilities being researched to take security to the next level, but with no information as to what those programs are and what they consisted of.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. We appreciate your comments.
Well, my name is Josh Felker. I'm a community member. I work in the community. I own Lone Star Handgun and Shooting Range. I've taught over thirty-five thousand people and license to carry. I'm here to talk about the Guardian Program. There's currently two hundred and seventeen school districts in the state of Texas that already allow it. Santa Fe, Texas, two officers at the school, ten were killed and thirteen wounded. Sandy Hook had reinforced entry, twenty-six were killed. Pearl High School, Mississippi, nineteen ninety-seven, the vice principal stopped further, stopped the active shooter from going to the elementary school by pulling a gun out of his vehicle, which currently state law allows teachers to carry a gun in their vehicle. Ocala, Florida, April eighteenth, resource officer stopped shooter after initial gunfire after three minutes. This is a volunteer program. No one's asking teachers to carry. It's up to them if they'd like to carry. This is to bridge the gap. We're not training SWAT officers on entry. We're making sure teachers have a reasonable understanding on the use of deadly force and that they can hopefully hit their target. This is to bridge that one- to three-minute gap that the school district currently has for officers on the ground. You already have license-to-carry holders out in public. There's people carrying guns every day that are armed civilians that are there to stop the bad guys. We cannot stop evil. We can only protect others from it. And lastly, I'd like to state, there are fire extinguishers in every school and every building. We get, we teach our kids, and we go through fire drills all the time. The last time a child was killed was nineteen fifty-eight. Chicago, Our Lady of the Angels School, where fifty, or where ninety-five were killed. I don't think this is any different. By fire extinguishers?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public meeting for the board to get input. It is not a meeting for y'all to discuss it with each other. Please, you've had your, you've had your opportunity to speak, sir.
I would say this. I would say this. I would say this on that. How many fire extinguishers have stopped fires from continuing? Folks, I understand this is a, this is a kind of a, works at our heartstrings, but we don't need to wait until a school shooter shows up at our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Felker. Your time is expired. Thank you, sir.
I'm a parent of seventh-grade twins at Legacy Middle School. I'm a spouse of an educator, and we understand that you're planning on implementing the program for district-level administration. My concern is that I don't feel that the community parents were informed. I sit on a site-based committee with the school. I feel like I am an engaged and active parent. I'm, I mean, I think I'm at the school three times a day, but I was told that a hundred and eighty-four people were surveyed. This is a district with over ten thousand students enrolled, and I don't think that that's fair or an accurate representation of what parents have to say. So I just, you know, also, I, I will say that the AFT and NEA oppose guns in the schools. I don't believe that more guns is the answer, but I do hope that the board would reconsider making any decisions without more input from the parents in the community.
Michael Cavassos.
Stan Signature, sorry. Didn't really plan to speak.
Thank you, sir. Had to have some help with that.
I'm just a parent. I didn't really plan to speak. I came here with my wife, who's a teacher. But I'm not necessarily directly opposed or for it, but I do have two boys. One of them's in high school, and one is about to go to high school. I graduated from East Central in ninety-five. I grew up with weapons. I just think if y'all are going to do this, you need to do this very thoughtfully and integrate it with the police force. There are opportunities for discharge, accidental discharge. We've all been around in hunting accidents. We've all grown up with a kid who accidentally got shot or killed. I know I grew up with several that were killed in hunting accidents. I work as an operations director in a very large industry where there's a lot of many violent encounters, including violent assaults, so I tend to be the first responder because of my responsibilities. It's very stressful. I've been trained. I was a biologist, but I've worked with the community for a long time and have learned how to deal with those situations, but it is intensely stressful, and if someone's not prepared for that, it can be quite harmful for them. So all I ask is that you thoughtfully consider this, and if you do this, to integrate it well and take the time to teach those people not only how to handle the firearm, but also to handle the after-effects, the stress, because those situations do creep up later on, and they come back to you, and hopefully that will never be the case. I will say this, both my boys have expressed that they would feel comfortable knowing that there was someone there to defend them, because they've grown up around weapons and they're not, they're comfortable with them. They don't, I don't think they obsess over them or like them, but they're not uncomfortable with them. I think communication's gonna be key, not only to the community, but directly to the students, so they understand and just remember that there's always those students that are capable of overpowering a teacher. So having those contingency plans, and I just ask that y'all be thoughtful about it. That's it.
Good evening. My name is Heather Ramon Ayala. I've been in East Central since I was born, and I have four kids here, two just graduated last year. I came by because I just found out about this on Sunday, and as of lately, that's not the first time with something going on in our school district that I find out at the last minute, and that's the part that worries me and upsets me the most. I've been told that y'all had five committees regarding this, spoke to administrators. That leads me to believe, you know, round about, maybe you spoke to about a hundred people. I've heard now a hundred and eighty-four. I looked up our population. We're over ten thousand. Let's assume every kid has two parents. That's twenty thousand parents, and you spoke to a hundred people. That's less than a half a percent. That's insulting. And so I'm wondering why we're leaving the community out of this decision. You know, this Guardian Program, if, if you would've told me Guardian Program two weeks ago, I really would've thought that you were referring to maybe a helpful program for the special needs kids, something along those lines. I also noticed that we had someone at Legacy, and I mentioned this to someone in our district. We had a teacher at Legacy that had a breakdown a few weeks ago. My son said the administrators came into the class, and this was their teacher and said, hey, you're gonna be getting a sub for a while.
Ms. Ramon, I'd really prefer that you not talk about staff at this meeting.
Well, considering that we're considering arming staff.
Ms. Ramon, I would really appreciate if you not.
I don't know this staff member's name.
Ms. Ramon, your time is up. Thank you, ma'am. Valerie Reyna, please. No, ma'am, you may not. Ms. Ramon is finished. If you would like to speak, you may speak. I assume that, are you going to speak? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ayala has chosen, Ms. Reyna has chosen not to speak. Mary Beth Fisk, please.
Mr. Bryant, members of the school board, and Mr. Tascano, I thank you for the opportunity for a few minutes to weigh in on this topic of this evening. Over the course of this past year, if you look back to November fifth of twenty seventeen, forty-five minutes after the shooter left the First Baptist Church of Sutherland Springs, I arrived on scene at the request of our law enforcement. We sat with those families, and we sat with them as they got the worst news of their lives. We haven't left them since with counseling needs for the organization that I represent. The devastation, the pain and the agony that these families have felt is real. Since that time, the state of Texas, as well as the United States, have invited us to come, and I was a keynote speaker at the Mass Violence Conference in Eugene, Oregon, this past month. There, we met with individuals from Santa Fe High School, from Columbine, from Parkland, Florida High School, Sandy Hook, and many others. Just today, there was a school, there were two high school students gunned down, two blocks away from their high school in Houston, Texas. I would submit to you that I would want to applaud East Central ISD. I was very proud when in Dallas, Texas, that the Meadows Mental Health Authorities gave kudos to East Central. They said there is a program in San Antonio, Texas called EC Care, and EC Care is looking at prevention of such activities and these types of difficult situations. I was very proud, not only to be a graduate of East Central, but to have three of my sons. Two have graduated. One is a high school student at ECHS. So we're doing good in prevention. The schools and the facilities have been tightened and secured as much as they possibly can be within our infrastructure, so check off on that one. Governor Abbott, on May thirtieth of this year, sent out an edict basically describing what safe schools needed to look like, unfortunately in this day and time, not the same as when I was growing up in the district. In his memorandum, I have a copy for our school board members. If you don't already have a copy, it is available online. Making schools safer, increase law enforcement presence at schools. Check. East Central has done that. The board authorized additional law enforcement to the, to the ECPD. The second is to train more school marshals and guardians and improve the program. Look at ways that this can be implemented safely, not mandatory to any faculty member or administration, but that they, with proper training, psychological analysis, and assessment annually, would be qualified to participate in the program.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk. Your time is expired.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Denise Arisbee. Denise, I'm sorry.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I came here and I felt like I have to as a parent. I have two boys, and this is, sorry. I come from a family of military and law enforcement, and my husband has always taught my boys, if you're gonna hold it, be prepared to shoot it. And our teachers are here to teach, and they do a very good job. I'm not asking them to be responsible to put that weapon in their hands. I want our community to have a very good discussion about what's gonna be implemented before it happens. And I think our community, as ECISD, we need to talk about it more before a decision is made. Not anybody can handle a situation and what is gonna happen after that situation, and who's gonna be responsible for those weapons? How are they gonna be taken care of? These are my questions. What if somebody does get a hold of this weapon, and it's gonna cause some more problems? Before we create more problems, let's have a very good discussion about this very important decision, because as my boys are, he's a senior in high school, my son's in middle school, he still has a long time with the, with the school district, and I just wanna make sure that he's safe, the teachers are safe, not just, not just holding a gun, it's pointing, shoot. It's make sure that they are mentally prepared to hold that weapon, because there's consequences for the person that's gonna do the shooting and the person that's gonna be there for them afterwards, because PTSD is very important to discuss. And I don't want just anybody holding a weapon in my son's classroom. If they're gonna hold it, I need to make sure that they are extremely trained before it's in that classroom. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public speakers section. Everyone who signed up had an opportunity to speak. We'll now move on to item five, public hearing for effectiveness of accelerated instruction for high school students. Mr. Tascano, please.
Sir trustees, if you'll look at your electronic packet on page, beginning on page nine, you'll see an annual report reflecting the effectiveness of this past year's accelerated programs. These are programs that are mandated by Education Code through the Texas Education Agency for students who are struggling to pass in-of-course exams. And so our particular program offers a diversity of options. You'll see those color-coded on the first page. We categorize our enrichment support for students in terms of before school, after school, within the school day, and in-school class. And what we have found is that students who need additional support need a, a multi-pronged approach so that their needs can be met. We continue to reflect on the success of our approach every year and make adjustments. This past year's conclusion was that those that were outside the school day tended to be less, less attended proportionately, therefore less effective. Long discussions around whether we should continue to invest in outside-the-school-day enrichment and supports is continually had among staff, but we continue to feel like because it is attended, that for some kids, that's one of the few options that they have in their busy school schedule. So we do continue to offer outside-the-school-day intervention and enrichment support, even though it's not the most popular. The most effective tend to be in-the-school-day, and we see a pretty strong correlation between students who succeed on assessments that they previously struggled with and their enrollment in an in-the-school-day intervention or enrichment. When you look at the percent passing of students who are categorized as retesters, you'll notice what would appear on a hundred-point scale is low pass rates, which they are. What I will clarify is that these are students that oftentimes, when you trace back their schooling history on standardized assessments, they've always struggled and, in many cases, have never passed a state exam. Fortunately, we've been able to, with systemic interventions and support, have been able to graduate upwards, in the upper nineties of students. These tests are required for graduation, and ultimately, whether it takes them one time or multiple times to pass, or whether they're not even close initially to passing, we've gotta get them there in order to graduate. And as a system, we've consistently been able to do that over time. So for us, while some students struggle early, we want to continually encourage them that it's not where you start, it's where you finish, and you've gotta continue to persist. and you've gotta continue to persist. And we continue to do that as a system right alongside them. So, the report is there for you. You'll see some findings, some of which I've already pointed to. And you'll see some of the adjustments that are made for this year's intervention program. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have at this time.
Anyone have any questions about the effectiveness of accelerated instruction? All right. Moving on to agenda item six, A, Performance-Based Monitoring Analysis System.
For this report, trustees, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Accountability and School Transformation. And he'll refer back to a conversation that we had with the board last week around state accountability. This is an extension of that. So, Mr. Holbert?
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share our latest accountability report. Today's report is the Performance-Based Monitoring and Accountability System. That's really a state system that's a response to federal requirements. So, there's four groups that it really focuses on. The first group are English learners, so students that don't natively speak English. The second group is special education. The third group revolves around ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a fancy way of saying we're looking at migrant students and students that receive title funding, which is pretty much all of our campuses except for BCLC and the high school. And then there's a small group of students at the high school, like homeless students, that also count in that group. And the fourth group, let's see, so we've got English learners, special education, ESSA, and the Career and Technology Program. So, those are the four big components for it. And they stage us from a zero up to a four. So, the higher the score, the more the concern and the lower, the lower's less concern. And so, you may recall last month, I shared with you a report with some plans. And so, we made plans specifically to work with special education and our English language learners. And so, we've, every year around this time, they have that same report and it was delayed this year. And so, we got together and we were working on plans and we didn't wanna wait for them to publish the report. And so, we'd already made plans and we were acting on them. So, we already have that plan in place that will address any concerns that they have and we'll be submitting that later. But, so, let's see. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the PBMS report.
Anybody have any questions about PBMS?
I just wanted to point, trustees, that that report is in your packet and begins on page 12 for your reference.
I think we're good. Thank you, sir. Item B, Personnel Report.
Trustees, this month's personnel report is located on page 19 in your packet, as is the case throughout the year. You see very little activity in our monthly personnel reports. I do wanna point to a few items in the report without specificity, just a generalization. We do track attrition and we do conduct exit interviews and we monitor essentially employees that left us who chose to leave us and employees who left us for future promotional opportunities and employees who left us for life reasons. For example, husband got stationed in a new city. And employees who we asked to exit the organization. So, by categorizing them in that way, we can see trends and patterns of those that perhaps we lost. And so, in looking at the very limited activity this month, I wanted to note that we did have one promote to a director position in another district. One was recruited from us, who is in a very high-demand role in a school psychologist position. And then we had one who was asked to leave the organization and was, is replaced by a East Central graduate who has completed their certification program or in the process of finishing their certification program. We're excited about that. And then we had a couple of positions that fortunately we were able to absorb because of really good stewardship of staff at the high school. So, just wanted to note that overall, we feel like that while there's a little bit of attrition this month, again, very limited, that for the most part, they weren't employees that we lost. And that's what's most important to us.
If anyone has any further questions about the personnel report, please get with Mr. Toscano offline. Item C, Construction Update.
Yeah, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Selby to provide the board with this month's update.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano.
Sir.
President Bryant and board members. You have in your, the, once again, the thrilling presentation on the board's construction update from the 2016 bond program. Tradition Elementary Schools is, as you know, we've already moved in and we continue to do punch list and warranty items on that and continue training of staff on how to use all the fancy new equipment we have. Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts has gotten certificate of occupancy and glad to say at last, and hosted their first performance there on November 2nd and 3rd and apparently went very well. They are continuing to work on their punch list. We met today on that and continue to work through items with them. The other portion, Phase Two of all of the bond program, as you know, is the additions and renovations that we did at Salado, Harmony, Pecan Valley, and Sinclair. At Salado, we continue to work on Phase Three, which is primarily the A Wing, as it's commonly referred to. That phase continues and will be completed by Christmas. We'll move out, move into that new facility and what's called Wing A or A Wing over Christmas. And they will move over to Phase Four, which is primarily the B Wing. And then complete all the rest of their project this summer in Phase Five. Harmony Elementary School, once again, we're finishing up in Phase Three. We've, we will probably get done after Thanksgiving. We thought we'd be done by Thanksgiving, but I think it'll be a little bit after that, which is fine. We'll begin to phase the process of moving teachers into that completed Phase Three section out of Phase Four. And then after, during and after Christmas, they'll start on Phase Four through May, finish up this summer on Phase Five. Pecan Valley Elementary School, we have completed Phase Three and they have, teachers have moved into that area. Over Thanksgiving break, we'll begin to finalize that and move, begin moving the, anybody else out of Phase Four so that they can begin the renovations in that area. They'll finish up by May and then complete Phase Five over the summer. Sinclair Elementary, sounds like a broken record here, but it's Phase Three. We continue to work on that. That'll be completed certainly by Christmas. It'll be actually between Christmas and Thanksgiving that that'll be completed and we'll begin the process of moving in during that time. Phase Four, after everybody's moved out, we'll begin that process December-January timeframe and continue through May, finish up with Phase Five over the summer. And then at John Glenn, as you know, we brought to you the guaranteed maximum price for that project at the October board meeting. We are underway with abatement in the areas that will be demolished. And then demolition will start very soon after that. This will be completed no later than June. And of course, this is all done out of our fund balance. ECDC, we still, we will start working on that project next. And if there's any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Anyone have any questions?
What punch items are in the pack? Is it a lot?
At the pack, there was quite a few. We went through it today. They've completed somewhere around sixty to sixty-five percent of what was on the punch list. Of course, that's the whole, hanging fruit, the easy ones, the paint and stuff like that. But they have made major progress in getting a lot of that done. The other parts are really things that are gonna be up high. They have a lift there now, back over there, and they'll start, they're starting to work on those. We're planning to meet on a regular basis to not only review what they say they've done, but we'll follow up with visits to make sure they actually did what they said. And so, we're anticipating, I'd tell you when they will get done because... But I would say it would be within the next month. Majority of the things would be done, other than those items that may be longer lead, if they're having to replace something or along that line. Because we are pushing pretty hard to get them to complete.
Was that a current picture, the?
Which one?
Picture of the pack?
Uh, that was a little bit older. I didn't take one today like I normally do.
I noticed there were still some plywood up there.
No, it's gone.
Okay.
It looks beautiful at night though.
Yeah, it does.
Looks really, really.
That's why I was going fast. I was hoping you wouldn't notice.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Selby? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And item D, upcoming events.
Trustees, if you could take a quick look at your November-December calendar. A couple of items I wanna call to your attention. We are on Thanksgiving break next week. The district will be closed through the 24th and we will resume regular schedule on the 26th. Looking in your December calendar, it begins to get a little more active. You'll notice that on December 1st, the Elmendorf community is having its annual Christmas parade beginning at noon. It's a relatively brief parade, but we do have a wide range of student groups represented annually in that parade. Really nice community event out there in Elmendorf. On the 5th, the high school athletic department will be hosting the first of, I believe, three sports banquets. They will have their fall awards ceremony at 5:00 in the cafeteria. Moving on to the 14th, this one you might really wanna mark on your calendar. The choir will do its annual Christmas show in the Patterson, which is our performing arts center and is promising to be a fantastic event. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 18th. The first of our series of ag shows for those in our ag and 4H programs begins annually with a kickoff, East Central ISD Ag Show. Two-day, all-day on the 21st and 22nd show. It's the first opportunity during the show season for all of our students who are in both of those programs to kick off their show season. They always appreciate trustees and staff popping in. They do a great job of noticing you and making an announcement to recognize you as well. They definitely appreciate all of our presence. Moving on to Christmas, please note that the Christmas vacation will officially begin on Monday, the 24th. You'll see in your calendar that runs through the first week of January. We'd be happy to answer any questions about your calendar questions?
Any questions?
What's the pancakes with Santa?
So, pancakes with Santa.
I need to have a talk with Santa.
Well. That's a really good question. Does anybody in the audience know what pancakes for Santa is? Because I actually do not know.
So, it's put on by FCC LA.
Okay.
It's free for all the students and kids in our community. And so, they come out in conjunction with our Poli Arts program. They make a breakfast, come through, they can take pictures with Santa. There's arts and crafts that are there. It's just a community operations program at high school. Last year, we're estimating approximately 500 people showed up.
Awesome.
We're planning on it probably double issue because it got a lot of traction.
Lot of pancakes.
It was really great.
Santa's gonna be there, though?
Santa will be there.
Awesome. All right. Cool.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We're going to... All right. We're going to be skipping items A, B, and C. We did not receive the certified results from the last trustee election, so we'll not be canvassing the results. We will not be swearing in trustees and we will not be reorganizing the board this evening. Item D, Consider and Take Possible Action to Contract with Frontline Tech Group LLC.
Trustees, Frontline Tech Group offers web hosting services for many of our departments. We've been using Frontline for several years in the HR department, as well as, well, in our HR department, for example, we use the web hosting software from Frontline for our substitute management program to survey prospective candidates who are teacher candidates, as well as candidates for several other classifications of employment. It's a screen-in survey. We also use it for our online applications, we call Aplictrack, as well as we've recently shifted over to an online electronic onboarding platform, which again is all hosted by Frontline. This year, we'll be adding some additional software options that Frontline offers. And actually, we've already been utilizing eSped in our special education program that manages all of our special education documents electronically. But our bilingual program will be adding eStar. So, now that we're adding these extra options from Frontline, it's going to exceed, the contract is going to exceed the $50,000 threshold, which requires board approval before moving forward. So, we're bringing this to you tonight for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions? I think we're ready.
Trustees, I recommend board approval to contract with Frontline Tech Group LLC for web hosting services in the amount of $77,991.11.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the contract with Frontline Tech Group. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Grant from the Spurs Silver and Black Team-Up Challenge.
Trustees, board policy requires that any gift or property that is going to be donated to the district that has a value of $500,000 or greater, that be approved by the board. Any gift given to the district must not be given to a particular school. That gift is at the discretion of the superintendent or board designee. The gift may be used in a particular school or program at the board's, with the board's approval. So, Oak Crest Elementary has been selected to receive a grant in the amount of $17,800 by the Silver and Black Spurs Team-Up Challenge Program. They were chosen because of an application that they submitted, which was reviewed by the committee who awards the grant dollars that the Silver and Black Spurs Team-Up Challenge has available to them. The grant for Oak Crest is going to be utilized to purchase reading materials, to host family nights, to provide additional field trip opportunities for students and to purchase supplies and other items which will, which are intended to promote and engage students in their education and to enrich engagement with the community. So, we're actually pretty excited. It's pretty rare to get one of these awards and wanted to bring that to your attention for your consideration.
Any questions? Any comments? Congratulations, Oak Crest. We're ready for your recommendations.
Sir, so trustees, I recommend board approval of the grant for $17,800 from the Spurs Silver and Black Team-Up Challenge as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept a grant from the Spurs Silver and Black Team-Up Challenge. Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion by Mr. Massenagel. We have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, 2017-2018 District Audit.
Mr. President, as per board policy, CFC, the board is required to have fiscal, the district's fiscal accounts audited annually by a... the district's fiscal accounts audited annually by a certified public accountant. And she'll, and the results of that shall be filed with the Texas Education Agency. This year's audit has been completed by Coleman Horton and Company and their representative, Mr. Derek Walker, is here to present their report to the board at this time. Mr. Walker? In your electronic packet, the audit report begins on page 28. I believe Mr. Walker will probably point to a few documents in that report. It runs from page 28 to page 127.
Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Toscano. Appreciate the opportunity to be up here to present the audit for the fiscal year, August 31st, 2018. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank your staff for all the time and hard work they put into getting ready for us on that audit. I'm going to keep it about five minutes, keep it short and sweet if that's okay with y'all. So. If you'll turn to page four and six, these are our opinion letters. These are the only things, as I've explained in the past, that are ours. Briefly, it states that we audited the district's financial statements for the year ending August 31st, 2018. And we did so using accounting and auditing principles generally accepted United States of America. It goes on to state that the, the financial statements are the responsibility of the district of management. Our responsibility is to provide an opinion on those financial statements. And we believe, as of August 31st, 2018, that the district's financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial operation of the district, also known as a clean or unqualified audit opinion. So congratulations to the district in that regard. There are two other audit reports that we, or opinion letters that we present. So if the district receives federal funds, it's required to have an audit on its internal controls, compliance and other matters. That was a clean audit report as well, or an unqualified opinion. And then if the district receives over $750,000 in federal funds, it's required to have an audit done on its major programs, major federal programs. That was also a clean or unqualified opinion. So congratulations to the district in that regard. I want to briefly mention, there was a new accounting standard that came into effect this year. It was called GASB 75. I think the majority, have, is everyone on, here been on the board over four years roughly? Everyone looks familiar. The same standard kind of came about five years ago and it had to do with the, the district's portion of pension liability that they were responsible for. Well, this new standard accounts for employee retiree benefits. And as y'all know, health insurance costs are going up. Those, that expense is, is, is great. This liability only affects your government-wide statements. Those are the statements that are prepared once a year, usually with the audit. They don't affect your fund financial statements, which y'all use to budget on a month-to-month basis on. But I wanted to make you aware of that. And, and the liability for the district is quite a bit. Now, it's an unfunded liability, but that liability was roughly about 31 million for this, for this past year. So, and that's about three times as much as that pension liability was. Wanted to mention it going on. If you'll turn to page 18, I want to just go over a couple of numbers with you real quick. This, in essence, is your balance sheet, or sorry, your income statement for the year. Sorry, that's on pages 19 and 20. So this tells you what your total revenues were for the year, which is about up there top. And it's broken up by your general fund, your debt service fund, your capital projects and your total funds. So if you don't mind, let's take a look at that first column on page 19. Midway down, the excess deficit or the change in fund balance, fund balance in the general fund went down 5.1 million dollars over the past year. And that's expected. It's, Mr. Selby also mentioned, y'all are spending some of that money, some of that fund balance on your capital projects and that's what it's there for. It's a savings account. So that led to the general fund with an ending fund balance of 26 million. Debt service fund, which is the next column over, decreased 663,000, leaving it with an ending fund balance of 5.8 million. Capital projects decreased 60 million, leaving it with an ending fund balance of roughly 12 million dollars. And we know that. So once you issue those bonds, your fund balance goes up, you know, by the amount of bonds you have. And as soon as you start spending, that fund balance comes down as well. So other funds, this includes your food service, your Title I, et cetera. That's on page 20. Increased 59,000 for the year, leaving that fund balance of 2.3 million dollars. Overall, the audit was very clean. The only one finding that we did have was that there was a budget over expenditure in food service. But other than that, everything looked good and in shape and just, just how we're accustomed to seeing East Central. So we try to get these audits reports to y'all a little bit earlier so y'all have time to review them. If y'all have any questions, I'd like to answer them at this time. If you don't, you know, our, our naming numbers on that letterhead, please give us a call. So, do y'all have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
That's good.
I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Good deal. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, trustees, I recommend that the 2017-2018 audit of the district's financial accounts be approved by the board as prepared and presented by Coleman Horton and Company.
Thank you, sir. We have a recommendation by the superintendent to accept the board audit prepared by Coleman Horton and Company, LLP. Chair will entertain a motion? We have a motion by Ms. Beriantos. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? Not the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Beriantos. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. All right, we have some executive session items that we need to attend to. The Board of Trustees on November 13th, 2018, beginning at 7:54 PM. Convened in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code Sections 551.071. Consultation with attorney to seek advice regarding pending or contemplated litigation related to the assessment of liquidated damages associated with construction matters. Code 551.074, deliberate the possible appointment of a public officer or employee to school guardian program. Code 551.076 and 551.089, deliberate the deployment or specific occasion for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure or security devices. The board ended its closed meeting at 10:14 PM. On November 13th, 2018, no action was taken in the closed meeting. All right, moving on to our agenda item 10A. Consider and take possible action related to litigation of the assessed liquidated damages associated with construction matters. Chair will entertain a motion. There being no motion, we will move on to agenda item 10B. Consider and take possible action to adopt a resolution and amend board policy establishing a school guardian program. Chair will entertain a motion. There being no motion, we will move on to agenda item C. Consider and take action to approve individuals for the school guardian program. Chair will entertain a motion. There being no motion, we move on to a request of the superintendent to develop frequently asked questions based on the guardian program and to bring this agenda item back to the board in January. All right. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other items from the board members? All right. We certainly appreciate all of you being here this evening. I hope that you understand that we have taken your comments into consideration. I also hope that you understand that if we do adopt a guardian program, there are some portions of that program that you will never know anything about. We are not going to divulge all of our security measures to everybody in the world because that leaves us vulnerable in some cases. I know that it's our desire as people to know everything there is about every program in the district, but there are some times that that is just not possible. We don't publish the security rounds for our police department and we do that for a reason. We don't want everybody to know where they're going to be all the time. So please take that into consideration when you talk to your neighbors about the guardian program. Please understand that we are here for the safety and security of our staff and our teacher, our teachers, our staff, our students. That is one of our utmost concerns. It's one of your utmost concerns. You've told us that over and over again when we go through our pillars program. You want your kids to be safe at school. We want your kids to be safe at school. We want our teachers to be safe. We want our staff to be safe. It's important to us. It's community. Everybody wants their kids and their spouses to come home to them in the same condition they left that morning. It takes a lot of effort. This has been an ongoing program within the district for a number of years. It is not something that's happened overnight, but we thank you for being here this evening. Hope each of you has a good Thanksgiving. Hope that the staff has the opportunity to get home, hug your kids, hug your spouses, spend a little bit more time with them. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion by Mr. Massengill. We have a second by Ms. Beriantos. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone.